Where's mine?
This seems so awkward down here.
Down there?
No, down here.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Anything good?
Uh-huh. Ah.
Jerry, that I'm standing on the case.
Okay.
You know, some found it and I say I'm staying.
Okay. I'll try to remember then. Who's the guy in the pink shirt? Peachy pink shirt in the front row. The January 16th, 2018 City of Andalia Council Meeting will now come to order. We will have a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council members, you have had the opportunity to review the council public meeting minutes of December the 11th, the council special meeting minutes of December the 12th, the council study session minutes of January the 2nd, the council organizational meeting minutes of January the 2nd, and also the council meeting minutes of January the 2nd. Are there any revisions or corrections? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. We have no communication petitions or awards this evening, nor do we have any public hearing. And this brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment to us, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for your comment, and then give us your comment? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Eric Campbell. I live at 6741 New Main Street. I'm here to represent. Unfortunately, the neighbors couldn't make it due to part of their business in sickness. We are against the Casey carryout moving into our neighborhood. We understand that we have a shell station out until 24 hours a day. Understanding that the revision is that there's supposed to be no other service station within 500 foot of them. Also, the zoning board, I believe, turned this down. We're just here to wish our opinion, if they can stop, to improve the neighborhood. We'd appreciate the council voting against the Casey life.
Well, thank you very much, and I hope your neighbors get well very soon. Is there anyone else who would like to make comment?
Will this be the only opportunity to address council level when that subject comes up?
Are you talking about Casey's? They'll come up later.
It will be an opportunity.
Mm-hmm, later. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? We have no public hearing, we have no communication petitions or war. Oh, I guess I better follow the correct agenda here. The city managers report, "We have no information items, nor do we have any action items, nor do we have any old business." So that brings us to our first resolution of the evening, and that's 18-R-04. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of 15 sets of Janesville Lion Apparel fire protective clothing requested by the Division of Fire from Phoenix Safety Outfitters at the State of Ohio contract bid price of $29,400.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So the Division of Fire has budgeted $35,000 for the replacement of 15 sets of protective clothing. The National Fire Protection Association recommends replacing protective clothing every five years. The protective clothing proposed to be replaced is currently seven to 10 years old. There are two state bid vendors that meet the department's specifications. Janesville, which is a product of Lion Apparel, a Andalia company, offers the lowest cost of $1,960 per set through Phoenix Outfitters of Springfield. So the total cost for those 15 sets would be $29,400.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Resolution 18-R-04 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Herbst, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-04. Are there any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. Resolution 18-R-05. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution awarding the bid for three police patrol vehicles requested by the Division of Police to Bo Townson in the total cumulative amount of $102,534,000 as the lowest and best bid, and declaring the existing three police patrol vehicles being replaced a surplus property.
Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So bids for three new police patrol vehicles were opened on December 15th. Bid packets were sent to four car dealerships in the city and eight others that had requested to be placed on our bid list. Bo Townson Ford submitted the loan bid for a 2018 Ford Police Utility Interceptor all-wheel-drive patrol vehicle at a unit price of $34,178. The total cost for the three units is below the 2018 budgeted amount of $109,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 18-R-05.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Lewis, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-05 as presented. Are there questions or comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. Resolution 18-R-86. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase for nine mobile radios requested by the Division of Police from Motorola Solutions through PNR Communications, Inc. in the amount of $39,937.41, and declaring the existing equipment being replaced as surplus property.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So $42,255 is budgeted for the replacement of portable and mobile radios in the Police Department. Motorola, the sole source provider of the radios that are utilized by the Police Department, has provided a quote for six portable radios and three mobile radios through the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program. The radios being replaced are seven to nine years old. The current radios will no longer be supported by Motorola after 2019, and we are therefore transitioning to new radios.
Thank you. I was reminded, this is Resolution 18-R-06. And so do I have a motion for that one?
I move that we approve Resolution 18-R-06 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fars, second by Councilman Blakesley, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-06. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution awarding the bid for one unmarked sedan vehicle requested by the Division of Police to Bo Townson Ford in the amount of $23,700 as the lowest and best bid, and declaring the existing 209 Mercury Grand Marquis unmarked vehicle being replaced a surplus property.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So an unmarked police vehicle is budgeted for replacement at a cost of $25,000. The Police Department opened bids on December 15th for one newer used sedan. Bid packets were sent to four car dealerships in the city and eight others that had requested to be placed on our bid list. Bo Townson Ford submitted the loan bid for a new 2018 Ford Taurus.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Resolution 18-R-07.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Lewis, second by Councilman Ayers, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-07. Are there any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. Resolution R-08. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution waiving the formal bidding requirements and authorizing certain services from the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab for laboratory and AFIS assessments for the 2018 calendar year.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Andalia Police Department has utilized the services of the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab for more than 40 years. Said services include laboratory analysis in all scientific sections, supplies for the department's evidence technicians, and attendance by three officers at the crime lab's evidence technician course. Montgomery County recently completed a cost analysis study of the crime lab to create a rate model. And the proposed annual fee for 2018 is $29,696, which is a 10.3% increase. The 2018 budget for this contract was $29,620.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 18-R-0.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakesley, second by Vice Mayor Herbst, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-06 as presented. Are there any questions or comments?
Oh, eight.
Oh, eight.
Zero eight, not oh eight.
Zero eight.
Zero eight. No, I said oh eight.
Numbers are always zero.
Incredible.
Do we need to do this over again? Everybody on board?
This is the roll call for 18-R-08.
Right.
Okay. Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. Okay, here we go to another one. Resolution 18-R-09. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution approving a financial contribution to the Andalia Development Corporation.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. City Council budgeted $100,000 in 2018 for donations to the Andalia Development Corporation. The Development Corporation has requested that council donate $50,000 at this time in support of two recently approved grant proposals.
Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve Resolution 18-R-09.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Herbst, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-09. Are there any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. We have no ordinances in their first reading, nor are there any ordinances in their second reading, nor are there any emergency ordinances. And that brings us to the reports from boards and commissions tonight with a variance for a fuel station at 626 West National Road. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Casey's Marketing Company has requested variances to allow the construction of a Casey's General Store with a gasoline filling station at 626 West National Road. The zoning code requires gasoline filling stations on the same side of the street to be at least 500 feet apart. This proposed facility would be directly across Talke Road from the True North BP Station. Additionally, the gasoline filling station is prohibited from being within 200 feet of a district where residences are permitted. In this instance, a residential single-family district directly abuts the south property line of this proposed development. The Zoning Board of Appeals reviewed these variance requested its December 13 meeting and voted 3 to 1 to recommend denial of both variances.
Thank you. I understand that there are some individuals who would like to speak to this variance. And so, once again, if you come to the podium, state your name and address for our records and give us your statement. We'd appreciate it.
Also, my name is Ryan Howard. I'm from True North Energy. Address is 6748 River Crest Drive, North Carolina, 4504. So Mayor Setser, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember of the borough residents, thank you for your time speaking. Approximately two years ago, I stood here in front of you, it was March of 2016, seeking, we were seeking to purchase the close-friendly location with intention of raising that building, raising our existing small dated facilities and rebuilding on both of those properties. With your granting us approval of the zoning and activating the little permits to complete those activities to the tune of a cost of around $2.5 million. So here's the night, because we understand the risk when we put money out there and make an investment of that nature, that there might be competition that comes into the area. And we feel confident and reliable market against our competitors. However, we did know when we made that investment that there was an ordinance that would have prohibited anyone from being directly beside us on either side and, you know, anywhere within 500 feet of us. And so, you know, granting this variance would have a negative effect on our business that sort of way we did not anticipate when we made those agreements. And in reading some of the materials in advance of the BCA and the Village Workshop, Casey's attorney had commented that she had never seen a ordinance of this nature. Well, we do business all over Ohio as well as in Chicago, and there are numerous different ways that municipalities go about implementing their long-term planning mechanisms. And this is one that we have seen in other areas. In addition, I just wanted to quickly address just a couple areas of the variance criteria here. One is relative to whether the property owner, when owner purchased the property with the knowledge of zoning restrictions. I would venture to guess that Casey's has not yet purchased that property. I would venture to guess that it's probably under contract. They're probably in a due diligence stage. That's typically the process here. So they don't own the property yet. Also, one of the other variance criteria is whether the spirit and intent behind the zoning requirement would be observed and see if it's done by granting a variance. And, you know, I don't think there's any way you could say the spirit and intent specifically related to the 500-foot buffer would be affected. And finally, there's the variance substantial. I can tell you as a business owner, you have two different businesses within Andalia. It would be very substantial to us. One of the questions that I was asked by, and I don't remember exactly who it was on council, but one of the questions I was asked is, if we were granted ability to rebuild that facility, would we close the other facility that we own? And my comment was that we would not do it at that time. As you continue to add convenience store gas stations to the area, something will have to eventually get. So whether that's our facility, Speedway, or others out there, you know, that's just to remind you that the question that was posed to us during that process that would have an adverse effect not only on our location but others out there as well. So quite simply, I don't think there's enough, you know, just reason to create this variance, and we ask that you take our comments and leave us out of it.
Thank you very much. I understand there are some others who would like to speak to this. Good evening.
Good evening.
And once again, I have to remind you to state your name and address for our records.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Cunningham. My address is 65 State Street, Los Angeles, Ohio. And I am here, I'm attorney. I'm here on behalf of the ACP Casey's and the vice minister here as well. We're here to answer questions that you might have. We did appear with some neighbors at the council committee meeting and also before the BCA on this variance. And we have filed with the variance. Our reasoning for, the reason that we thought the variance was appropriate at this location, also met with neighbors in advance of the BCA meeting and have continued to try to work with the city to do the best we can to screen against neighbors. We appreciate that the neighboring gas station, service station, and community is nor would want what they call competition across the street. This is a unique corner in that it's a T-intersection with a signal light on US 40 across Menanport. There are not going to be any gas stations across the street, or many service stations across the street at that corner. And with the size and the depth of lot, it allows Casey's the opportunity to do what the Shell Station has next door. That has provided a very large buffer to the neighbors. We understand that neighbors are concerned about another gas station on that corner, but any other business would have a 30-foot setback from the neighbors. In this case, because of the size of the property, Casey's has set itself almost 115 feet from neighbors, which is almost the depth of their lots, which aren't like 120-foot lots. And also have a large green space with a large mound and landscaping on top to buffer the neighbors so that they really will not see these next door. This is a property that has been for sale for over 10 years. The current owner has vacated the property and has no intention to come back. It was not in great repair, and Casey's is asking, prepared to make a three and a half to four and a half million dollar investment in their community as well. They believe that they can make it there at that location. And zoning is typically not about business competition. Competition, that's a good thing for the community, a bad thing for the community. So because of the nature of that intersection and the distance they can get from the neighbors and the location of the airport and a lot of other things which you heard about it, your community meeting and everything, you heard about Casey's is here wanting to invest in their community. They are not your typical, as you heard, they are not your typical convenience store with gas pumps. They are a fueling station with a convenience store that offers and makes homemade pizzas and homemade subs and breads. And they have that there, and a restaurant sits down kind of a place at their stores. And they want to be in communities like yours, and they want to be close to neighborhoods because that's who uses their business. And so because of all of those things and the distances that they can get from separation, and the location of that corner, the unique location across the airport, frankly, the inability of that property to develop in any other way in quite some time, they're asking for council's approval for a variance to allow them to establish a viable commercial entity at this location to interject some capital into your community for new employees and invest in them to where they want to be. So we would appreciate it if council would consent to grant the variances. The vote was 3 to 1, and there were members of the BCA who recognized the difficulty of that side. We had an adjoining neighbor on the other side who was equally enthusiastic about wanting Casey's on that corner at the committee meeting for the same reasons, just the energy of the community with new development and new love at the location is always been typically good for the overall community. And Casey's asks that you grant the variance. On that side, if you have any questions, the vice minister this hearing, Matt Casey, he is a representative, employed by and a representative of Casey's and is happy to answer your questions. We feel like we appreciate the time and that you gave both the vice and me at the committee meeting. And we don't want to be repetitive and just circle your time. So we're happy to answer any questions. I did write handouts at the last meeting showing kind of the before and after on the locations on that side, the distance from the neighbors. I have those with me if anyone wants to see them. Also have display boards, but I feel like we don't want to inundate council. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question for them? Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion for the variance at 2626 West National Road.
Your Honor, I'll move that we deny the variances for the fuel station at 626 West Nationals Road.
Second.
There's a motion from Councilman Lewis, second by Councilwoman Fars, to deny the motion for the variance request at 226 West National Road.
626, Your Honor, I believe.
626. Did anybody ever tell you I transpose numbers? I am so sorry. Tonight's one of those. Are there any comments or questions or anything?
I'd only like to say that this is a very difficult issue, and it came down to the, to me, the property rights of the folks that own the property and its use versus the neighbors who have lived there under the current zoning code. And while they may be adverse to development, which would be understandable, but they should be able to rely on our zoning code, which has been in effect for a number of years. And that code prevents this particular use in that particular spot. And as a result, I'm moving to deny the variance.
I would also echo the same, and for me, it's not about the competition. It is about our zoning code and how it relates to this and the reason it was enacted by councils and zoning boards before us and the reason why it's there. And I feel strongly for that reason.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
I remind council, this is a motion to deny. Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Abstain.
Mayor Setser?
Yes. The motion is denied by four. There's one absent and one abstention. Okay, continuing on. What do we have? Planning Commission minutes of November the 28th. Those were given to you. And we then have council comments, starting with our attorney.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Cruzey?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Fars?
I would like to excuse Councilwoman Gerhart from this, our meetings this evening. All of the meetings this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is that all?
Well, I just want to, I'm sitting up here and we're chuckling at times. And we've been, we had to change places tonight, and it made me realize what creatures of habit we are, that it just kind of threw everybody off. So all that transposing numbers, I just think everybody's out of order up here tonight, so.
Out of sorts.
Except you, Bob. That's all, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Lewis?
None, Your Honor.
Councilman Ayers?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Blakesley?
Well, I did take your advice, Mayor, and joined the Citizens Police Academy.
Ooh, good!
I've been wanting to do that for some time. And so finally went ahead and took that opportunity, and hope still has a spot for me in. that opportunity, and hope still has a spot for me in that. Looking forward to it.
Oh, they will. And guess what? As part of that, you can sign up to take a ride with a patrolman, but you don't have to be in the police academy to be able to take a ride with a patrolman. So if you have not done that, you should really do it. It's eye-opening, to say the least, so.
One of the reasons on the application asked, "Why are you doing this?", and I put, "Because the mayor said to."
Okay. Vice Mayor Herbst?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
And I have nothing tonight. What we will do is now to go back to our study session, and I believe we have two items?
Three items.
Three items, three items in our study session tonight, so. Thank you very much, and this part is over.